Good evening. I would like to call to order the May tenth, two thousand and seventeen, school committee meeting. The time now is six thirty-two P.M. Our first order of business is to continue discussion relative to strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. The school committee will reconvene in open session at seven P.M. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. This requires a roll call. Mrs. Bennet, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Jay votes aye as well. So at this time we'll be entering into executive session and we're returning for our regular scheduled meeting at seven P.M. Thank you. Good evening. I would like to call to order the May tenth, two thousand and seventeen, school committee meeting. The time now is seven P.M. The May tenth, two thousand and seventeen, school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Can we see no media again tonight? I hope somebody has the cameras because we have lots of great stuff going on. We want to take some pictures. Oh. Are you from...
Oh, I was hoping to take a recording of a little part of the meeting.
Okay. Are you from a newspaper or just a resident?
I'm just a resident.
Okay. Good for you. I'm glad you're interested in school committee stuff. Again, if anyone has a great camera and wants to take some great pictures, then I will send it to newspapers ourself. So thank you so much. So at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to live right in the United States of America and to serve your public for justice and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a great evening planned this evening. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, for the recognition this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First part of our recognition goes to an element that I've touched on all the community about quite a bit with my arrival to Tewksbury, and that's certainly the dedication of the community to the schools. And the small town feel that comes along with that and the involvement in the community is something that certainly energizes me and something I look forward to becoming in this community. We have a great example tonight of that heritage that happens with this town. And tonight, I'm very proud to talk a little bit about the Ginsburg Family Award. And this award is for outstanding partnership with Tewksbury Public Schools. If I could have Mr. Ginsburg bring his family on up here, please. And I know that we're expecting that because I think that would be fantastic, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the award and the background of this award. On behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee, it's certainly our privilege to honor and recognize community members who have greatly contributed to our schools. The school committee is proud tonight to recognize Mark and Lisa Ginsburg as community members who have demonstrated an exceptional commitment to the children of Tewksbury Public Schools over the past twenty-six years. Since nineteen eighty-nine, when their children first entered our schools, both Mark and Lisa have given countless hours of their time to help within our schools. Lisa could be found volunteering in the classroom, going on field trips, helping at the school store, working at the concession stands, participating in the committees, and so much more. This was all happening while Mark could be found focusing on volunteer efforts at the football stadium, in the hockey arena, popping popcorn at the drama club, and participating in numerous committees. No matter where help is needed, Mark and Lisa always responded to the need and found ways to help the schools. Over the years, you have been positive influence on all of our schools and all of our students. As parents, you have been a positive role model for three children, Matt, Joe, and Andrew. As a result of your children following in your footsteps through their involvement in our schools and our community. In addition to the countless hours of time volunteering, your financial contribution to our school has been remarkable. There are numerous financial contributions that are known, but so many more that are not known. This truly speaks to Mark and Lisa's values. They are civic-minded and invested in making Tewksbury a better community. One example can be the use of the Tewksbury Country Club for school-sponsored events. We are indeed fortunate to have an impressive facility such as the Tewksbury Country Club in our town that hosts many different events, including the National Honor Society Awards, Tewksbury Education Foundation Auction, Father and Daughter Days, rain ceremonies/dinner for state championships for our hockey team, and so much more. Some of our students' best memories have happened at the Tewksbury Country Club. Another example is when Mark and Lisa recently donated an extremely generous amount of books to our schools. We could go on all evening with the wonderful things they have done. We are indeed fortunate to have the support of the Ginsburg family here in Tewksbury. We applaud your dedication and commitment to the Tewksbury community and especially the Tewksbury Public Schools. The students have benefited from your numerous contributions. We are sincerely grateful for all that you have done, and please know that you have made a significant and positive difference for our students within our schools by your ongoing support. Mark and Lisa, one cannot help but be impressed by all that you've done, and we sincerely appreciate and thank you for your outstanding partnership to the schools. And we're honored here to have all of your family here tonight to present this great award. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I get the distinct honor of this year's Ginsburg Award being awarded to two residents that certainly enriched Tewksbury, as the Ginsburg Award says, and that is Sandy and Larry Palomino. Hopefully you'll come right up. So I get to say a few words, and it's going to be probably just as long as Mr. Malone said. I'm sure that all the residents of Tewksbury have been touched in one way or another by Sandy and Larry Palomino's generosity. Some of their contributions you may not even be aware of, that they've done this behind the scenes. They've helped the public library, the town hall, the police station, and all of our schools. We've all been affected by their kindness. When Sandy and Larry say they'll support an effort, they are all in and go all out. That's just the Palomino family way. They've both volunteered countless hours and held numerous positions in town. Sandy has volunteered in the Tewksbury Pacts throughout the years. Tewksbury Garden Club, she was the president in the past, volunteered in all our schools from reading books to handing out lunches. She's coached girls softball. She's even coached the boys' baseball team, and I've actually seen her behind the fence still yelling at the players of what to do. She's been a board member of the Tewksbury Farm, and Larry has been able to keep up with his amazing work by being a member of the Tewksbury Finance Committee, member of the Library Building Committee, member of the Tewksbury Police Building Committee, member of the Building Committee for the TMHS Edition, a board member of the Tewksbury Baseball, and also the Pop Warner Advisory Committee. They have not only been generous with their time, but their countless donations. Some of it includes friendship for the town hall and our schools, the Tewksbury Community Pantry, the Tewksbury Farm, the Wounded Warrior Project, and also the Tewksbury Education Foundation. They were extremely instrumental in the first auction that we held about five years ago. The TMHS Turf Fields and the Strong Fields, the Tewksbury Police Athletic League, the Tewksbury Patriotic Committee, the Salvation Army, Friends of the Tewksbury Library, they even purchased a generator for the library, the Trees of the Troops, the 9/11 Memorial, even the center of town tree lighting would not be possible without them. They are certainly the first to jump in and donate, like the Ginsburg family. I've seen them attend music concerts at an elementary school and recognize the program is a need of additional equipment, and they're the first to jump up, and they donated handbells to the elementary schools. Sandy and Larry exemplify the true meaning and generosity and are so deserving of the Ginsburg Award this year. Sandy and Larry, thank you for all you do for our schools and the town of Tewksbury. Your generosity has made a positive impact in so many of the families of Tewksbury. We are truly blessed to have you in our community. Thank you.
Your name should probably be on the top, not the bottom. I appreciate all you do. You guys have been a great inspiration to myself and my family.
Can we just stand all together and can somebody take a wonderful picture? Mrs. Regan will get up. The Ginsburg and the Palominos together, just stand up for a nice picture and send it to the newspaper. Oh, for the air.
Good Larry, first mark. Yeah, you got it right.
Chrissy, would you like to get in with your family?
I'd like to take a photo with you. It's about the children.
That looks beautiful. It's very pretty.
It doesn't have any sophers. Stand back.
She's up nice and...
They're a little embarrassed. They're really shocked.
That's okay. The red is nice.
You had a great king today. I don't mind.
All right. Ready? Almost. There we are. One, two, three. I'm going to do this more than once because I shake sometimes. We ready the ponytails good? One, two, three. All right. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
I'll put this next to my Super Bowl statue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as for, I'd like a little help from Mr. Castanaway from the Trahan School, and Ms. Fagan is here as well. Please come on up. And this award really speaks to some of our outstanding students in schools, and some of those unique competitions where our students have great opportunities to excel, and particularly in those areas that we don't be in in the classroom every day. And we're very happy and proud to recognize Nathaniel Kason from the Trahan Elementary School for his natural beauty. Mr. Castanaway, could you tell us, and Ms. Fagan, could you tell us a little bit about Nathaniel?
Yes. So a few months ago, right, our students, all of our fourth grade students, all one-hundred-and-twenty of them, participated in the National Geographic Bee, which is a nationwide competition. We had twelve finalists from our fourth grade class compete in the school final, and I'm happy to salute Nathaniel here, who was our school Bee champion this year. He's in Ms. Fagan's class. Ms. Fagan is one of our amazing fourth grade teachers, and Nathaniel is an amazing fourth grade student. I don't know, Ms. Fagan, you want to speak a little bit to Nate as a student in your class?
Absolutely. Nate is an extremely hard-working fourth grade student in our class, and I can speak so highly of Nate, and he studied so hard for the National Geographic Bee, and he shares that still with the classroom on geography. He stumps me sometimes as well, I have to admit. So congratulations, Nate.
Thank you.
And one note I do want to mention with the Bee, fourth graders through eighth graders compete in this Bee all across the country. And one fun fact, you know I like fun facts, is that whether you're in fourth grade or eighth grade, all the students receive the same questions. So it amazes me every year when we have our fourth graders compete, the number of questions that they're able to answer correctly. So it's really impressive that Nate, again, was our school champion and able to answer many questions that eighth graders answer as well. So kudos to Nate, and it couldn't have gone to a better kid. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you, everyone. Please come up and give your fifth and number, sir, as well. All right. On behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee, I'm honored to present this resolution and recognition to you tonight, Nate. Whereas the National Geographic Society prepares material for the annual National Geographic Bee, a contest designed to inspire students to be curious about the world, and whereas Nate qualified to represent his classroom in the school Y finals, and whereas on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, twelve finalists at the Trahan Elementary School competed in the two thousand and seventeen National Geographic School Bee Championship, and whereas Nate was named champion of the two thousand and seventeen National Geographic Bee at the Trahan Elementary School, and whereas Nate distinguishes himself as an excellent student and a member of the student body who upholds the ideas and values of the Trahan Elementary School, and whereas Nate has brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to himself, to his parents and family, to the school, and to the town of Tewksbury, now therefore be resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the outstanding achievement of Nate. Congratulations.
Again, that looks awesome. Want to turn that recognition around, Hannah, while we can see it? Awesome. All right. Let's do this again. One, two, three. One more, just in case.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Chair, in our continued recognition of outstanding volunteers in the district, which we certainly did a great job in our last meeting, we now like to recognize some of the volunteers from Tewksbury Memorial High School. If I could have Ms. Vogel come on up and help me a little bit. And again, the backbone of our schools are those volunteers who come in regularly to our schools and help out. These three people that are being honored tonight, in my first one ends at Tewksbury Memorial High School, I would have assumed they were staff members because they're here so often, and I see them, and I know there's a very special place in heaven for volunteers who volunteer at the high school level, Nate, because they obviously don't get the rewards they need. But at this time, I'd like the following three individuals to please come up. Joy Beatrice, Laura Hume, and Mary Ellen Sosis. And Ms. Vogel, if you could tell us maybe a little bit about some of those very specific things these terrific volunteers do for us at the high school.
Yes. As you said, Mr. Malone, it's, once kids get to high school, it's hard to get parents to sign on the dotted line and volunteer. So often their kids are saying, "Don't you dare come here." So, I mean, there's huge kudos to parents who are willing and whose children are willing to allow them to do that. These three women have worked tirelessly on behalf of TMHS, from whether it's, you know, doing a teacher luncheon, which we just had last week for Teacher Appreciation Week, which was something that until these women took hold in the pack was not something that happened for the teachers at the high school. So this has really been wonderful for our teachers to have that appreciation, something that's very common at the lower grades because it's more common for parents to be in the schools, but to have it at the high school has been really wonderful. They work very hard with the pack to help us to raise money, to support speakers that we have a couple times during the year, which is really very excellent, and have brought in some terrific speakers in the last few years that have really been beneficial to our case. And then, of course, there's All Night Long, which, between Applesfest and All Night Long, they spend an exorbitant amount of time on those two major events. And, you know, Applesfest raises a lot of money for the speakers, and then, as well as All Night Long, which is a substance-free evening for our graduates after graduation. So I don't know how they do it, staying up all night with two hundred teenagers, but they do. So it's wonderful. Thank you.
Let's take a nice picture. Nice picture for Mrs. Vogel.
Closer, okay? Everybody with me? One, two, three. Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think the final recognition is for Ms. Francis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malone. On Saturday, April twenty-ninth, the honor attended the BFW District Fifteen Banquet Awards, and the purpose of that award was to honor local winners in the Voice of Democracy and Patriot banner. Just to give you a little background about the day, too, is all the top representatives from the state BFW were there, from the senior person on down. It was well-attended, and it was packed, and most of the day was spent honoring Brooke Bunyan, who read her essay, and also Stephanie Tam, who went out to the nationals, who read her essay on Voice of Democracy. Both cases, everybody that was here gave a standing ovation. So in behalf of the high school, as I appear, they gave the Tewksbury Memorial High School Award. This award is presented to Tewksbury Memorial High School in appreciation for support and participation in the Voice of Democracy Program of the Veterans of Florence, who are the Department of Massachusetts, January twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen. So we have the BFW.
This one, let's do one more. Great.
Okay. So at this time, before we do our student representative report, as everyone will notice, we have two wonderful high school students here this evening. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Malone to talk a little bit about both students we have here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And certainly we would take this opportunity to welcome Ms. Grace Morris, who will be joining us, and we look forward to her input as a school committee to see what kind of student activities are going on in the schools, and certainly seek out her guidance and information about the school culture and things that will certainly help inform the committee. Also, before Kelsey makes her report, I would certainly like to recognize that this is Kelsey's last meet. So certainly, we are very appreciative of all her efforts. She's brought tremendous energy and insight to this committee, and someone who we can rely on, and certainly helps us make decisions on all of her input. And Kelsey, interestingly enough, is also the very first student I met in Tewksbury Public Schools, because she sat on the interview committee for me. So if I bomb, they know who to blame. But Kelsey's lead-up should be going on to Iowa College next year, and we're very proud of her, and we're very appreciative of her efforts, and she will certainly be missed today. And I know Ms. Regan also has some remarks she'd like to share.
I do. I don't know if people know this, you can probably guess this, but Kelsey has been a leader in our schools since, I think, forever. Probably out of the womb. I remember how impressed I was just at your level of maturity and your creative planning when you first joined the John and Ryan Dick Graves in the council. You won't be surprised to know that Kelsey continued in that pattern of community volunteerism, because really, you've got to take a leadership of volunteerism, throughout all of your years at Orion, at the Wind, and at the high school. In fact, you may remember that it's Kelsey that helped us create our very first tour of Tewksbury for all of our new teachers in the mentor program. I'm continuously impressed at your ability to take an idea from start to finish and just do it stupendously. Your talents, your maturity, your humor will greatly be missed. I wish you well. I expect you'll check in with us from time to time and tell us what great projects you're leading throughout the rest of your world, and possibly even ask us to help manage your campaign if you're continually asking the future. So thank you, Kelsey. Wish you well.
Mrs. Vogel, do you have to say anything to Kelsey this evening? It's her last meeting.
I know. Well, Kelsey has been, she has been, you know, our president of student council. She has also served this past year as president of the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, which is just fantastic, and she was the president for the whole Commonwealth, and she is ours, right? So she continues to, I mean, I met Kelsey, oh, I don't know, maybe my first day, right? And she has continued to be a leader, to be a visionary, to always share when she has an idea or thinks that we should try something new or different, and isn't shy of walking right into my office and asking a question, or saying, "What do you think about this?" or that. So I have very much appreciated that, and we'll miss you just walking into my office. Who knows, I'll just walk back in.
Kelsey, I guess I'm the one. It's been such a pleasure having you sit with the school committee, you know, you've had to do a perfect job, and you're exactly what exemplifies Tewksbury Memorial High School, so thank you for being with us. We're going to miss you, but we wish you well in college.
Thank you.
Stay in power. So Grace, that just means you have big shoes to fill now, but we know you're up for the challenge for sure. So who is going to give the Tewksbury Memorial High School report this evening?
One last time. One last time, what we make. So, Ms. Regan, you can get all the pictures you want. So, we'll start with student council. So for student council, we've elected our new executive board and are looking forward to a great next year. Student council helped out at TMHS's College Fair and will be helping out at the awards and scholarship night on next Thursday, May eighteenth. And our next in-school event will be hosting Fresh and Step Up Day with Peer Leadership for the Students Against destructive Decisions. With their year coming to a close, we thank all of our seniors, especially our senior presidents, Sam Travis and Miranda Hume. The new board will be announced shortly, and as senior week approaches, we hope that all of TMHS makes positive choices. The National Honor Society and student council will be teaming up to volunteer at Keith Burke Ice Cream Social later this month, and new members are beginning to work out in the personal service practice. Graduating members will be given their stools at the academic awards breakfast on June nineteenth. The art show is this weekend, and they would like to see you all there from, on Friday from seven to nine, or on Saturday from ten to one. And the Decca Club just returned back from the ICDC International Leadership and Competition. So Caitlin Dennethley and Samantha Wuon participated in the Decca Leadership Academy. Sam Torowitz had an excellent first year as a TMHS Decca member and competed in her category. Akil Baghul, and Akil Baghul earned a Silver Medalium for his top twenty test score in the Principles of Finance category. And they would like to make sure that everyone knows that it is the international conference, so we have people from Tewksbury who are placing in the top seeds in the world and have at the highest level of competition.
No, you should get in with her. Kelsey, can you hold your pretty flowers, too, please?
Yes.
There we go. Oh, very nice. All right. Beautiful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and good night, and we look forward to working with you, Ms. Morris. Okay. Moving right along, Mr. Malone, we have the presentations this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair. I think we'll start with the Orion Elementary School presentation of their handbook, followed by the Wind, unless you have anything to say. Okay.
Madam Chair, this is your final two presentations of our handbook. I have still handbooks, and I wanted to just to know that are seeing some significant changes in the Orion and the Wind handbooks this year, for the upcoming years. Principal John Bear and Principal Judy Guinness worked diligently, looking at both the elementary handbook and the high school handbook, put together a real consistent grade-five, two-way handbook. Since the first draft, there's been some small edits, you know, dramatic errors and things like that that we're looking to fix. Every time you look at it, you find more. But my presenting is made between us.
Mr. Ware and I both would like to start off with just a quick thank you to the staff and the assistant principals that helped us. A big shout out to TMHS. We use their handbook as a large portion of our thinking moving forward. And again, thank you to the committee for making some really on-point suggestions so that we can become fully in line and moving digitally as the high school has, and pretty excitedly. I just think it was something that we hadn't thought to do, and now seems like a good time. So Mr. Ware and I just have some highlights to walk you through.
So in combining the handbooks, we've built a common language across grades five through 12, and again, available online. We have shared expectations around the topics such as attendance, code of conduct, similar language regarding behavioral expectations, the roles of stakeholders, students' rights and responsibilities. We've made some changes to our address code based on some comments we had last year, and a student brought some, appropriately brought some per concern attention regarding, sort of language just seemed to be targeting one gender more than another. And so we revised that dress code to address what was a legitimate concern. And these changes also in support of transition. As students go from one handbook, and as parents go from one handbook to the next, they see a common language and a common format with a lot of the same language, so that there's going to be changes from one handbook to the next.
So one of the other things we wanted to share was that we have some similarities now that include the sections of the handbook, the formatting of the handbook, the sign-off online, as we mentioned, which will be through Community Pass. We have an emphasis on student behavior in the sense that the Ryan School added extensively to expectations behaviorally that were already outlined for the Wynn and for the high school. Although they may not happen as frequently, they do still happen, and I think it's just good practice for students and their families to be aware of those expectations. We also have policies and procedures around the Safe Schools Legislature that I know for the Ryan School, for sure, we did not have in full in our handbook. I think it's always wise to include anything that would help a family or a student understand what we expect here at school and what we have to offer as well.
And there are some differences based on grade level. As kids go through the grades, there are different expectations and different responses to some of those expectations. So there will be some differences between the Ryan and the Wynn. And it's within the level of detail provided in some areas. Developmentally appropriate topics, and there will be different responses for that. Some of the attendance tardiness procedures, different things might come into play at higher levels that don't come into play at lower levels. And then some differences in policies around electronic devices during school day.
So those were the big ideas. As you can see, that's myself and Mr. Ware.
I'm the one on the.
I'm the good-looking one. But we did want to talk and just ask for some feedback further. It's really been terrific, and thank you again to the Assistant Superintendent Regan, who also walked through us some of the ideas and things that we could do to improve. And we're certainly eager tonight as well to do anything further that you might consider.
Thank you very much. You guys did an absolutely fabulous job consolidating and bringing consistency, so we truly appreciate that. We know it's not easy, and working between both the schools, and we certainly appreciate that. You definitely streamlined the process, so I think that was great. So this time, I'd just like to open it up to see if anyone has any comments or questions for either one of you this evening. Mrs. Bennett?
Again, I definitely, as Tom said, I'm also looking at the high school handbook. I think that will definitely will help parents as they move through the grades. I just had a couple of questions for the Ryan School. I noticed the bike clubs, if you ride your bike to school, that just hit me. How many kids do actually ride their bikes?
Currently, we have zero students riding bikes. I would like to say, however, I did adopt that from the Wynn's handbook, because I love the fact that it asks the student to commit to wearing a helmet. So on and on, through the years, we have had bike riders in the past. I'm assuming we'll have a few more in the future. And I really wanted to make sure students knew that not just that we want them to ride the bikes, love the exercise, but also that safe riding practices are key. I was most excited about that and raced to ask our secretaries, "How many students really are riding bikes?" And they said, "No, just as many as you've seen."
I figured I'd ask.
I think it's a good question, and I put it in there just the same.
And maybe there's some parents out there now that will ask their kids to ride their bikes now.
And if nothing else, maybe it'll remind students, "Please wear your helmet." It's about the coolest thing you can do as a bike rider.
And then the other, for the Ryan School, I just noticed these two clubs that I haven't seen before. And it just, it was one my heart to see, the Kindness Club. That sounds great, and hopefully it is what it sounds like.
It's as wonderful as it sounds.
And the Doodling Club.
Well, and the Doodling Club came out of students asking, "Could we just, could we have a place where we don't have to necessarily be very gifted and artistic, but we're just interested in enjoying chatting and talking?" And Mr. Hart and Ms. Hanley have spearheaded that project. And honestly, it filled quite quickly, and we're pretty proud of it. And by the way, just a little shout out, the Kindness Club has done some baking and some donating to our community helpers at the fire department. They took a little walking field trip and brought some goodies down and some thank you notes. So they really just have thought a lot about how can they thank the people that help us, and they also worked on thanking each other in the school. So it's really been sweet and very kind, obviously, and as a line.
And Mr. Ware, for the Wynn School, I see your list growing for activities, so that's encouraging. I do love to see that. And I noticed that you did adopt doing a generic absentee email. So parents now can email out. I know that high school does that, and the Ryan School's in, so I'm glad to see that as well. So thank you, both have done a great job, and your staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Francis?
Thank you, I just want to echo what my two other members said. I really like the common language aspect, though. And I think that, as you know, we have a lot of transitions for our students. I think anytime we can do anything to make the transition a little bit easier for the student and the parents, I think it's a good thing. So I want to commend the work, working jointly together. And again, I'm really excited about the transition plan. Thank you.
Hey, not seeing any other comments. You did a wonderful job. So would someone like to make a motion? Let's take the John F. Ryan Handbook first.
I'll make a motion to accept tonight the John F. Ryan Elementary School Handbook.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to accept the John F. Ryan Elementary School Handbook for the year 2017, 2018. This does require a roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan, have you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, outstanding job on their handbook. Could we take the Wynn Handbook up next?
I'll make a motion tonight to accept the John W. Wynn Middle School Handbook for 2017, 2018.
Second, then.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor this evening to approve the John W. Wynn Middle School Handbook for the 2017, 2018 school year. This does require a roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan, have you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, I'd like to thank both of you for continuing to always make things better. We have, this handbook is great, very comprehensive. I enjoyed reading through it. It was pretty quick, you consolidated, so we didn't see as, we had as much homework this last night. You guys did a wonderful job, and again, I appreciate you working with our high school principal, Mrs. Vogel, as well. Streamlining is always a great thing, and I know the families in this community will truly appreciate it as well. So thank you, job well done.
Thank you both. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, a question to the chair that the committee consider moving back to number one in our new business, 2017 summer reading program, in the agenda. To this point in the meeting, while we have the principals.
Absolutely. Who would like to make that motion? That's a great suggestion, Mr. Malone.
Make that motion. I'll second that.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to take out a board this evening, since we have staff in the room, looking under new business R, number one, 2017 summer reading program, and putting it up in the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, as you know, typically, we talk about summer reading at our last school committee meeting of the school year. But in an attempt to work a little bit closer with the Tewksbury Public Library, they requested that we submit our book list to them in advance of that year. So we're trying to accommodate them. Obviously, they have to accommodate our students with a long list of reading books, and we really do appreciate their efforts. Let me recap, the goal of summer reading is obviously to minimize the regression of students, to minimize the regression students have in their learning over the summer. That's typically known as what we call a summer spy. The summer reading books, however, are chosen by teachers at the appropriate grade levels to really reflect certain themes that weave their way through that grade. We are asking students and parents, well, their younger students, pick books that appeal to them, hopefully from that list, and that are appropriate to their reading level. They can also work with their teacher or guidance counselor if they feel that none of the books on the list meet their needs. The most important aspect is that they engage their brain, discuss what they're reading with parents and guardians and friends at every age level. As I've said, every year, summer reading is like sunshine for the brain. It keeps them alert and engages their thinking. In your packet, you have the draft letters and assignments from each grade band. You can see that there are suggested authors, titles, graphic organizers, and jot-down key information, and assignments that are done in class once the students return that may serve as a baseline project or writing grade. More importantly, you can see that each grade level band focuses on the theme that I talked about, and that is woven through the grade level curriculum in different classes. I just want to, for parents that might be watching, the themes are diverse. Pre-school through grade two, it's really about learning to read. Grades three and four, you can see, it's really about the joy of reading. What did you like about the book? What would you share about the book? Grades five and six focus on parts of the story, the character, the plot, the setting. Grade seven really focuses now on character development. Grade eight, individuals overcoming challenges. And you can see that the high school has really, if you remember from the MIA study, there was a suggestion to integrate learning throughout the grade levels and throughout the different disciplines. In grade nine, the theme for freshmen is tragedy in the internal conflict. In grade 10, it's self-discovery. In grade 11, it's the American dream. And in grade 12, it's the hero's journey, inner versus outer conflict. Additionally, the Tewksbury Memorial High School this year has added any and all required AP reading books over the summer. So some of our AP courses, not all, require that students read a book that relates to the course. You can see that those books are now listed in the grade level. There's one edit we need to make, and that is, I think, if any junior were to take the AP Economics, that book would also be listed under the junior AP list. Students will receive these packets and have them reviewed with their respective reading teachers and/or their BLA teachers before the end of the school year. They'll also be, as we will post it to our district website. We're still working on some small edits with each of the packets and the principles prior to releasing them. But as I said, they're very comprehensive. There's been a lot of great thought, and really, I think this year, some thought too to accommodate students who might want a different book that's on the list. How do they know what to pick, relate to the theme that the grade level is suggesting? So with that said, our principals from the Ryan and the Wynn and the high schools, as well as our BLA department head, Ms. Lynn Hattig, is right here in the audience tonight. Do you have any further questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Regan, appreciate that. So I will say for one, I've seen over the years, the summer program has really tremendously improved here in the Tewksbury Public Schools. I remember when I first started and where we are today, and it really continues to evolve and be student-focused, which I really love. Like one, you know, the whole idea is to get kids reading, right? To love reading, to expand their knowledge, really just to keep them going over the summer. You know, I like that we're not overdoing it, because in the same aspect, as much as we want to require reading, we also want students to enjoy their summer vacation as well. So I think we really have gotten to a place where we really have a nice balance now, where we're doing it age-appropriate through all our grades, even up through the high school, where we're making it pretty much significant in our task for what, whether it be AP courses, you know, or anything else for focused, you know, for the different years. So I really want to commend everyone throughout the district, because I think it's not just one grade. It's the entire district has really put a lot of time and effort into summer reading, and it really is so different today and time, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate all the work that goes into this, because we know it's not easy. Picking books, you're never going to win. Why do you pick this book? Do I have another book? But I also love that we continue to listen to families and students and the needs, and that we are working with everyone. Because there have been instances, right, where people may not like exactly what's on the list. And again, our administrators are working with everybody. So I really, really want to commend all of you we have tonight and your colleagues, because I think we really are in a great place with our summer reading, and I really love all the work that's gone in through the years to get us to a really good place here in Tewksbury.
You know, I would be remiss if I didn't also mention that our high school department head, Ms. Lynn Hattig, are also met with a core group of students at each grade level to determine what is the best way to approach high school summer reading. You know, I have to say, the students were probably a little bit, had probably a little bit more higher expectation than we originally put out. So it was really important that the student voice was part of the decision-making in the process. So we should know that.
Thank you very much. I think that's really getting the student feedback, especially at the high school level, is so important. So thank you for that, it's a great way to approach it.
It really helped a lot. It helped to open our eyes, and we got some great books to come out, you know, from things that they had read or heard about, so it really was a very good experience.
Yeah, wonderful. I usually read one of those books over the summer. And you do have a good variety, because I ended up reading one that my student, my child didn't even read, and then switched it. But you do have great choices out there, and that goes to say for everyone. I really like it, and I like how we've come a long way. We're now working with the Tewksbury Library. We're getting lots of books available. I mean, when you think about it, we look back eight years ago, we are such in a wonderful place. And that really goes to show all the hard work that got put into summer reading through the years. So I just want to say that, I think it had to be said, we really appreciate it, and thank everyone that's worked on summer reading. So at that point, I'd like to open up to any of my colleagues, if they'd like to comment or have any questions about our summer reading program. Mrs. Bennett?
I, of course, always do, right? Thank you again for putting this together. And I like how all of you are allowing parents to choose a book that isn't on the list and go to you. And I think in the edit for the Wynn School, you'll also be adding that in, I believe.
Yeah, we'll add a accommodated version of a book.
Okay, awesome. The only other question I had was for the high school summer reading. I know you mentioned the AP, so I'm glad that has been incorporated. I just want to make sure the AP US History was also a junior. I know two years ago, there was a large book that was required over the summer, and I know it went away last year.
It did.
So are we, we're not going to bring that back?
No.
This year?
No, she, it's not requiring that for summer reading this year.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again for all the work.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. Madam Chair said it all, but as a, as a person who's been on this committee for now almost nine years, where we were eight, nine years ago, and where we are today with summer reading, especially at the high school, it's night and day. And I think that that's a testimony to everybody who's worked so hard to do it. And again, I think with the options and everything, and getting the students involved in the decisions on the books, we seem to be doing much better with that, not just in this, but with all our other activities and programs, getting the student involved. I'd like to see, continue that to happen. Once again, thank you very much for all the work, and how far we've come. Thank you.
Would you like us to take a motion to approve the summer reading this evening?
I think that would be very helpful, especially the list, where we can get these lists off the Tewksbury Public Library.
Wonderful. So would someone like to make that motion this evening?
I'll make that motion to approve the summer reading and the list that will be provided to us this evening.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second on the floor this evening to approve the 2017 summer reading program overhaul for the entire district. This will require a roll call vote, so all those, everybody is. Mrs. Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, can't say enough, raving reviews about that summer program. So when summer vacation hits, stop your summer reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we're going back in order, we are now at Citizens Forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening during the Citizens Forum? Okay, not seeing anyone this evening. Moving right along to our clerk, Mr. Sullivan, who will present our minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 26, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the April 26, 2017 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Our clerk, Mr. Sullivan, will now present our payroll.
I'd also like to move the school department payroll for the period ending May 4th, 2017 to be approved and certified, and the amounts and categories are shown for a total amount of $1,202,805.78.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending May 4th, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, moving very long. Okay, moving right along, Mr. Malone, and we have the superintendent and staff reports this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of updates for the committee on staffing. We are in the hiring season. We have seven teaching staff members who will be retiring this year, so we are actively trying to recruit the right candidates to fill those positions, do a few additional positions of teachers that will be moving on to other locations and other jobs, and certainly other non-teaching staff that will also be making the hiring squad. One of our significant positions we will be looking at here shortly will be the North Street principal position. That position has been advertised currently today. We have over 50 people applying for that position. We'll be searching through those resumes over the next few weeks. Ms. Drew and I were able to go over to the North Street School yesterday and meet with the staff during the staff meeting, trying to update them on the process. We will survey the staff electronically and get some ideas about some of the characteristics they would like to see in a new principal. We'll certainly form a committee and recruit a few members from the building staff, as well as parents, a member of the school committee as well, and assemble that committee to conduct interviews. We hope that we can produce a timeline that will create the hiring of the new position prior to the end of the school year, but we would also want to make sure we do a thorough process and make sure we do a good job interviewing and choose the right candidate. But that is certainly a high-priority personnel issue that we'll be looking at. Also to inform the committee, we've worked with the administrative council a little bit and looked at some of the feedback on restructuring some of our summer retreat time, and one of the recommendations was to move at least one of the days before, at the end of the school year, where those items that can be addressed and dealt with in a timeframe at the end of the school year, where we can work on some issues, continue with that mid-August date and timeframe in conjunction with the school committee to also prepare for the opening of school. But it was their design that we look at that, so we're looking forward to that, that opportunity, to spread out some of that administrative council work over the summer.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Malone. So am I hearing correctly, it would be two meetings as opposed to one, so instead of just doing the one in the summer, does that not involve the school committee? Will it be one?
The school committee involved in the meeting would stay where it was in August, correct. But we would typically do a two-and-a-half slash three-day retreat. One of those days will now be on the front end. The school committee and presentations will stay in that mid-August city. So that won't, that won't change.
Okay, thank you.
Also, just a reminder, and I know, because you mentioned it, but on the district-wide art show coming up this weekend, great event, the happy, I think she mentioned seven o'clock is the start time on Friday night, I believe it's 6:30, in the auditorium with the band of chorus, and followed up Saturday, 10 to 2 with the art show. Great event, and we look forward to having everyone there. Also, I'll update the committee. The district security team met today. Ms. Paul Leo joined us as a member of the team, but we specifically looked at the security considerations around the prom event, promenade, and also graduation, to make sure we were doing our best in coordinating with police as far as traffic, security, and we want to make sure we have a well-planned event so everyone can come and enjoy. But certainly parking will be at premium here at the high school for both of those events. We will certainly set up shuttle opportunities, and we'll message out exactly how that works and what that would mean for parents through our principal ball. But certainly, it's something we're looking forward to, and we just hope it's a safe and, and great time for everyone involved.
And this might be a great opportunity, you and I discussed today. This is an opportunity for school committee members, they do need extra hands on deck. So if anyone is available to write on May 30 for the promenade at 4 o'clock, if you could get that to me as soon as possible, and then Mr. Malone will get that information to Mr. Lyons and Mr. Libby, who are coordinating the volunteers for that day. We know Mrs. Bennett's son will be walking, so we're not going to ask her. We want to enjoy this time with her senior, but if other members are available and it doesn't, it works with your schedule, you can get back to us within the next 48 hours. That would be terrific. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett.
And now it handed over to the screen.
Thank you very much. I have several updates. The first is just to say what an amazing performance Footloose was here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. If you were able to come and see it, you saw that the Tewksbury players just around standing, they're singing, they're dancing, the musical accompaniment, the band, simply, simply stupendous. Bravo, bravo, bravo to the players and to their directors Jade Scata and David Moffett. And a big, huge thank you to the many parents that support the rehearsals, the food, the time that it takes, and all the time students are here late at night preparing for that performance. So thank you to all. It was truly enjoyable. May 4 was our annual college fair for juniors here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. Approximately 75 colleges, and by the way, it's really turned into a college band post-graduate planning fair. 75 colleges, many branches of the militaries, and 10 businesses took part in supporting our students in the application process for jobs, whether it be through the summer or later in their lives. Some of the businesses that were here were UPS, Dunkin' Donuts, Eastern Bank, McDonald's, Pool School, pro-life guard training for the many students that want to work as lifeguards over the summer, and many more. Let me also tell you that last week, eight jobs skills training was provided by Lowell General Hospital and the Lowell Parks and Recreation Team. They provided students with some support around interviewing skills, internships, the do's and don'ts with meeting with prospective employees, whether it be in the summer or further in their career path. And yesterday, Thermo Fisher came to the high school to participate in a resume writing workshop. We had over 30 students participate with Thermo Fisher. I've asked Karen Baker-Bryan, because these are the brainchild of Karen Baker-Bryan and her team. I can't say enough just how amazing the guy who's part of these at our high school and the many offerings they have, parenting students for college and career. But I've asked her in the future, and possibly in the summer, to come in and talk about the internship that Thermo Fisher is offering to our students. Very exciting stuff. So it's a great week at the Tewksbury Memorial High School. This Friday evening, our district math coordinator and co-chair Heidi Reinhart are planning the first of their four family math nights. You saw the invitation. They're going to capitalize on the very, very well-attended ice cream socials at all of our elementary schools and highlight some daily fun and very relevant math activities parents can do at home over the summer, and every day, really, to keep their child's math fluency active. Much like summer reading, it's important to engage our students in thinking all summer long. So very excited, this is, they're just very busy and engaging and motivated educators, and they continue to impress us every day with what they're doing for our families and students. Also in the consent agenda, you'll see the annual staff professional development survey tool. It was implemented last Thursday at the end of the professional development workshop day. This tool, with our evaluation data that we did before, and the district vision, helps us to build the professional development plan for next year. I look forward to sharing that then with you over the summer. And that concludes our call.
I'll just have a couple of updates in association with the lead in the water. We have, I want the community to be aware that we've completely replaced all the fixtures at the Bryan, the Wynn, and the high school. This past Saturday, we had a maintenance crew come in and re-sample the water, and we're sending it out to get retested. Once we get those results back, and hopefully everything is fine, then we'll bring those fixtures back online. We're now going to be going to the four elementary schools to do the rest of the fixtures, and again, we'll go through that process. We'll re-sample, we'll retest, and we'll bring everything online. We're kind of hoping to have that all done by mid to end June. It takes a little bit of time to do it. Mr. Lyons and I met with the town manager and the town clerk today, along with the representative from the post office, and we discussed the printing and mailing of the moron articles. We'll be copying everything at our copy center. We explained that we were there for whatever they need. The departments will work together to make sure that all the town bylaws are met and the residents are prepared to receive the documents and the equipment at the time, right? So we're kind of getting everything together. FY '17 budget that you do see in your consent agenda, we're right on track with it. We've gone through all the payroll encumbrances to make sure everyone's all covered. We're in the middle of going through all the encumbered purchase order to make sure that we've accounted for everything to date, that we should be fine, absolutely fine with all of that. And finally, I just want to personally thank the community for supporting the school department moron articles. It was a long and thorough budget season, but I believe that we put together a budget that will meet the district needs. For the other moron articles that we supported, we have, the utility vehicles were all on order, and we're going to be picking those up the first week of July. We've begun our bidding process on the North Street boiler, and we've gone on to bid for the concrete pads over at Rosette Field. We have an architect coming in tomorrow to take a look at the area at Rosette, and hopefully help us put together a design that complies with all the ADA requirements and specifications. Got it, please.
So any other questions or feedback for anyone?
Question. Do you know if those stands will be ready for the next little season?
Well, we're hoping so. We, we're in the middle of having them tested because there's many, many layers of, since 1936, there's many layers in there, so we're making sure that we're going to be demolishing them. So we haven't gone on to bid on the demolition yet because we're just making sure what we have to do with the specs.
But the plan is to obviously, the plan is to be completed. Okay, thank you.
We're trying.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you. I just want to echo and thank you that Mrs. Beth has made on the community for that town meeting to pass any amendments, especially ones that were due this week. I want to thank once again the town manager for helping us out here. Fair enough, I believe, so.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Okay, moving right along, consent agenda. Does anyone wish to take anything off the consent agenda? Okay, I'd just like to add one thing, and this is totally my fault. I did not get to it today. I had received a call from Mr. Elwood regarding the Best Buddies Program today, and he wanted to see if we could approve it, knowing that we have a school committee meeting tonight. By the time I got here, you know, obviously, Mrs. Fundry, I left. So there is a form, and I'll be picking up that form tomorrow, and I'll get it to everybody. But in light of that, I would like to, just like we've done in the past, my errand wasn't able to get to the school on time. Mr. Elwood did try to get it, and it was something that materialized itself, and it's a fundraiser coming up. And Lou, they're not going to do the golf tournament, they're going to try something new to, to raise money for Best Buddies, and what other Best Buddy programs use as well. So I will pick up those forms, and I will drop them on to everybody to make sure everybody gets them, and then if we approve it, we, I'll check with everyone, see if they have any questions, and then I'll pass that on to Mrs. Malone. But I just want everyone to know, again, it's my fault, I take responsibility. I did not get here on time, therefore I did not have the tonight's meeting. I thank Mr. Elwood for reaching out to me, and we will definitely look at those forms if we have any questions, and work with Mr. Malone to approve that, just to make sure we get that done in a timely fashion before the next school meeting. So with that being said, the consent agenda, a man motion.
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda, and we're in motion with the added information Madam Chair gave us just now, Best Buddy.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor tonight, to approve the consent agenda, as well as take up the fundraising page for the Best Buddies Program that was submitted today. Again, my fault. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. And we will get back to Mr. Malone and Mr. Elwood on that as soon as possible. Okay, moving right along to committee reports. Elementary school building committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to report tonight that we are making great progress in the selection of owner, project manager. We interviewed four firms over the last couple of weeks, and we are proceeding with great speed, but with great caution. And on Monday night, we will also have another meeting to discuss how we're going to do the contract with our select. Once we have our OPM on board with a signed contract and the MSP approves it, I will have that, representatives of that firm at one of our meetings here to introduce them to the public. But I want to thank everybody on the building committee, it was a lot of time and effort, a lot of great dialogue and discussion during those two nights, and we are making great progress as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Would anyone else like to add any? Do you have one to do, school? Okay, wonderful. Moving right along to the Tewksbury Education Foundation, Mrs. Bennett.
The TEF is gearing up for the upcoming annual salary, which is on June 5th and 6th here at the high school. And they are also looking at family day at Kenley Lane Park in June, the June. And also, the TEF will be awarding two TMH students a scholarship on May 18.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. And then, who do you, Mr. Sullivan, for the wellness committee?
Yes, I haven't had my first meeting, that's on Monday, May 15, so I'm looking forward to it. And I also reached out to our newest selectman, Mr. Jay Kelly, and he's going to be joining us on behalf of a selectman as well on that committee. So it'd be great to have someone from the selectman on board, and I'd like to thank Arthur for reaching out and getting that ball rolling before I got here, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Bennett?
I'd like to also add, because Mr. Sullivan hasn't attended, there is an annual life review coming up that will happen before we meet again, so just mention it, on June 4th there at the high school.
Okay, wonderful. I always love that event. Great event. Okay, there are no policies this evening, although we will be pulling some policies coming up soon, and we'll bring them back at future meetings. Moving right over to the handbooks, we're all set up for all business, right, one and two. So Next Generation MCAS update.
Thank you. Well, I provided you with, I think, three separate documents that give us some updates as to the progress of Next Generation MCAS. The first document is the commissioner's weekly update. I wanted to highlight two key points from that update. The first is that the department is recruiting educators in grades three through eight, in both English language arts and math, to be part of their standard setting team. You remember the last meeting, Mr. Sullivan, who asked, well, those results, will we get them quicker now because it's online? The reality is, the standard setting process, as I said, calibrating what achievement looks like and what those cut scores are, and how to identify the level of knowledge students should have in each achievement level, is what that standard setting team will engage in that work. So we do have one teacher in Tewksbury who is interested in applying. The deadline is May 19. I'd rather reserve the volume of her name at this point, except for to tell you, she is a middle school math teacher, and we wish her great luck. I hope she gets on that team every time Tewksbury has direct working knowledge of what the department is planning for us, and it's always better for us students. So the second item is a reminder that May 8 is our deadline to submit a letter of justification if our MCAS alt participation rate went over 1%. Let me just, for any people that are watching, the MCAS alt is a non-standard assessment, much like a portfolio, where a very limited amount of our most severely disabled students can show their knowledge through evidence collecting. Very few of our students participate in MCAS alt. We are almost at exactly 1%. We have not increased over the 1%. We'll continue to monitor that participation count and certainly let you know if that numbers up or down. Superintendent Malone and myself participated in a teleconference around changes to accountability reporting with the 2017 Next Generation MCAS. Due to the fact, again, this is a new test, it's impossible to use previous growth models and other data to really truly look at a district's level or anyone's school's level. So the key changes really revolve around participation rates. So contrary to the MCAS alt rate having a maximum, the participation rate now has a new maximum among students that must participate, and that we can't dip below. And what the slides from the presentation are showing you, that any school cannot fall below a 90% participation rate on this new MCAS, or they'll automatically dip to our level three. So our typical participation rate is between very high 90s to 100%, but it is important to know that participation rates include documented medical issues, concussions, students that, you know, may go on vacation and do not return until that window is closed. We will, as needed, reach out to the department and see if we can have an extension, if it's a medical issue, or provide alternate ways for students to test, because we certainly want all students to be able to participate and have our schools properly reflect students' achievement, not attendance. The 2017 results will serve as a baseline for 2018 and Um, the 2017 results will serve as a baseline for 2018, and, uh, ongoing, the standard setting team, as I mentioned before, will be setting those minimum scores. The grades three through eight, Next Generation MCAS, ELA and math scores themselves will not negatively impact the schools', um, or districts' level. So, let me just say that again. The new MCAS testing grades three through eight, ELA and math cannot, we're held harmless from those scores affecting our level. It's the participation rate that could adversely affect our level. The high school, all things remain the same. It's been the same in MCAS and competency determination, so we're not seeing any changes there. Finally, the last MCAS update I've divided with has a couple of fun facts that I thought I should know. Approximately 230,000 students across the state to date, and this was last week, have already taken the online Next Generation MCAS. And I thought it's important to shout out Massachusetts because Rhode Island is in talks with the department about using our Next Generation MCAS as their statewide standardized assessment system. I think it just confirms how proud and all hail mid-part of the Massachusetts education system. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any feedback for Mrs. Regan? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Regan. Moving right along to the underhue business item number two, the draft. Uh, did anyone have a chance to look over the draft for the 2018 meeting schedule? Any sort of anyone that would be back, or we're going to bring this back, uh, next meeting to officially vote on it, so, um, great.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I know one of the dates we had looked at was July 25th, 2018. Um, wondering if the possibility to look at moving that to July 12th?
Now's the time to, yeah, I think there's enough, yep, that's great. Mrs. Johnson, do you have that?
Yeah.
July 12th, 2018. Yeah, now's the time to, we'll check their vacation schedules and, you know, make sure that we, uh, take a look at these dates, and then we'll be ready to bring this back to the next meeting and vote them in so we can put them up on the website. All right, great, that's wonderful. Uh, moving right along, uh, Mr. Malone, we have the contract this evening for Mrs. Regan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, once again, just to remind you, when looking at administrative contracts, uh, this year, I wanted to take a look at the construction of all those contracts, particularly where they include steps and merit pay. And that my concern was the effect on the budget long-term if those continue in. And in terms of do that, I wanted to negotiate, uh, salary numbers with, uh, district administrators to make sure they were compensated appropriately, but also, uh, be mindful of long-term districts and what a long-term contract with those type of increases would include. Specifically to the, uh, assistant superintendent position, I certainly, uh, looked at surrounding communities, uh, Burlington, Bill Ricka, Drakehead, Jumpsford, and Andover. Looked at their salaries around that. Um, I also looked at the Montezul study that was conducted by the town, uh, about a year and a half ago, and expanded on that into real-time numbers. Um, Ms. Regan, in fiscal year 2017, made $136,168. I'm proposing for fiscal year 2018, that number would be $141,976, uh, with the, uh, cost of living, school committee approval rate of increase, and what that. I would say a couple of things about this. One, um, in comparison with other districts, um, Ms. Regan's salary is still very much on the lower end. Um, I will be honest, I actually advocated for that number to be higher, and it was Ms. Regan who actually, uh, had consideration for the district, and it just speaks to her character. Uh, thought this was a, uh, a better number to look at, but, uh, when looking at surrounding districts, uh, I can't help but, uh, making the realization, knowing the assistant superintendents who are in those districts and knowing how great they are, uh, we have the better one here. And, uh, I'm very proud of Ms. Regan's work. Uh, she's been a significant asset on my arrival. You can tell by her detailed reporting in these meetings, but it doesn't speak to the enthusiasm that she brings to this district, uh, her sense of caring for this district. Um, she is the model to Tucksbury Public Schools employee, and she has a positive, uh, outlook upon her that's infectious to all that's here. So, um, I know this is a contract conversation. Uh, in my mind, uh, her values in this district is priceless. So, uh, certainly, I would like to respect her work and let her know that certainly we're very proud that, uh, we are offering another three-year contract, and I hope that the committee will approve that, but I don't think it begins to recognize the, the assets, achievements, and challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. We appreciate that feedback. This time, I'd like to open up to my colleague. If anyone has any questions or concerns with the contract or even any comments they'd like to make about Mrs. Regan tonight, um, the floor is yours. Would anyone like to begin? Okay, Mrs. Bennett?
I echo Mr. Malone, and I thank you very much for considering our whole district and our financial situation. We certainly couldn't want this to go without. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Mr. Cutlass?
And I know how hard you've worked and how hard you've worked over the last 20 years, and it's been a tremendous effort, and you're a tremendous asset for us, town and house. Certainly, I'd like to wish you a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mr. Francis?
Hey, I just want to echo what everybody else is saying. I know Mrs. Regan for a long time, we've worked on many other committees, applied to working together now, and the work that she does and the work that people don't even know that she does, um, is tremendous, and this contract, as an unit, again, to give the thanks and sneeze for all the hard work that she's done.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Sullivan?
I'd like to say thank you by a second, and Jay, we just hope that you, uh, are welcome and feel welcome to continue to raise our team's side of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Again, Mrs. Regan, we are indeed fortunate to have you here in Tucksbury. You are invaluable here. I can't imagine Tucksbury School District without you. You really have done tremendous things here, and I know you will continue to do that, and we are so, so lucky to have you here in Tucksbury. You definitely are exemplary assistant superintendent and some of the leadership things that you've done through the years, even working with other districts and bringing us together like we've never done in the past. So, um, this is well-deserved, and I appreciate your professionalism, um, and I appreciate your comments, um, regarding your salary, and that you really are in Tucksbury. So, we thank you for that and for looking out for us financially and looking out for this district, and that we know you love every day here, and it's very obvious in all the work that you do. So, at that time, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the contract between Regan as the assistant superintendent. I'm going to second.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second on the floor, to approve the contract between this, Mrs. Brenda Regan and the Tucksbury Public Schools effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020. This does require a roll call vote. Uh, the new salary for Mrs. Regan will be $141,976. So, at this point, um, I'd like to ask, Mr. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Setting the answer vote. And again, thank you, Mrs. Regan, for everything you do here in Tucksbury. Truly appreciate it. Thank you. We're getting the best deal, that's for sure.
So much.
Absolutely, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, so moving right along to the freshman English textbook proposal.
Just like I said, I'm happy again. I am very proud, first of all, and I just say thank you very much for the kind words that you offer. I'm very proud to be a member of this school district and continue to work on hardest for the half of our students, but, thank you. The first textbook purchase in front of you today is a recommendation for the Tucksbury Mall High School's freshman ELA textbook proposal. You can see that Lynn Hattaker has recommended that we, um, purchase, I'm sorry, I'm a little off. Um, Lynn Hattaker and her freshman team piloted two textbook series, Collections 2017 and My Perspectives. Tab should find the principal's recommendation to, um, adopt My Perspectives. That's the program that the team felt was most appropriate for the students of Tucksbury Mall High School. You can see that some of the assets of that program are really the lessons, the activities, the diverse, um, learning needs of all of our students. What's also most impressive is it comes in at almost or less than half of the other series. So, um, we have these two books right now on display at the center school up in the curriculum office. They'll be on display until the next two weeks. This, tonight, is information-only, no, but was required. I will be coming back at our June meeting to propose the purchase of My Perspectives. And as you can see, My Perspectives is at $11,365 and a little bit of change for a six-year contract versus the Collection series, which is $23,738 for a six-year contract. So, um, we'll be getting the best series the teachers felt that they, students needed, and we'll be there after class.
Does anyone have any questions on that series or? Okay, great.
Um, the next, the larger of the new curriculum resource proposals is a little incomplete in front of you tonight. Let me tell you why. As you know, our sixth through eighth grade science teachers have been looking at two series for the, uh, science program, and they were looking at Science Structure and Function by McGraw-Hill and inference of Glenn Poe, actually, I'm so now, and Realized Interactive Science by Pearson. You can see from the evaluations put forth from grade six and then grade seven, eight, we have a little bit of a difference of opinion. But what's really important to note is both, all three of these grade levels have been working on across district science math routine now. They truly have, uh, in-depth knowledge of the Massachusetts Next Generation Science theories. Unfortunately, throughout this whole year, the textbooks that they have been using are Next Generation Science standard, um, textbooks, however, not the Massachusetts Next Generation Science standards, which was recently adopted, um, late in 2016. So, both of these series rewrote the book to reflect the Massachusetts standards just recently. So, it's only really been in the last week that our teachers took apart these evaluations. In fact, as of last night, they were together for several hours on their own time evaluating the newest book. I can tell you, um, right now, we have both series on display because we know one of them will be my recommendation to purchase. As of last night, all three grade levels have unanimously voted that they want me to propose the purchase of Glenn Poe at our June meeting day. So, because this is information-only tonight, and we have, under our policy, um, these books need to be on display for people to come and see, we will have both versions, what they piloted, and the Massachusetts updated version. You can see the quotes or the proposals are fairly close, and, um, I just want to say to you that if we look at just the textbook and online component for six years and then add approximately 20,000 per year, which is the lab resources that go along with the text, we're looking at a range of $210,000 for six years with all the resources, the three grade levels. So, this is a major purchase. Those funds, as I will, um, report in June, come from our textbook capital fund, um, and we have that, those monies in our budget. Any questions on the proposals from the teachers?
Thank you. Did you give any questions? Mrs. Bennett?
Um, just one, great, one, Cutlass, how old are our science curriculum grades?
Well, it depends, and a lot of it's teacher-created, but our, um, current Prentice-Paul version, and if you remember from my, I'm going to throw a, a lot of years off the top of my head versus, um, the actual copyright date, we've been using the Prentice-Paul version. Remember, we bought that series, we split it up among the sixth, seventh, eighth, because the science series then were grade banned. Sixth through eight had to cover all these things. Now, sixth has to cover set standard, seventh, so they don't work for us anymore. Um, they don't really align. They were purchased, I'm, um, going to say, eight years ago. So, they're not only out of alignment, they really, um, we know our, our science scores can be better. So, one, we need to align them in their standards better. Two, to the units that our teachers have created, we need that resource that does those things. So, I hope that helps and illuminate, they're not only old, they just really aren't making a group of students.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. You want to say anything? So, Miss Regan, can you explain to the public why there's such a jump in price for science textbooks and labs as opposed to, I mean, you know, people used to see 20,000, $30,000 that we spent. You know, now we're talking, you know, five times that much, so, would you have words of wisdom on that?
Yeah, I, I can tell you, and it's really the accompanying resources that go with hands-on science, with the explorations, and science, you know, it's really about inquiries, about, um, lab work. It's about using things. So, there's a, there's a huge cost to the components of the science program, not the text, because you can see that that text is in line. It's about sixth through eight, half as many students as our K through six, less or even less than, and that's a bit, a little bit less than half of what we spent on January 2017. That's all text-based, so that's in line. The text and the online, it's all happened. But once you add in all the resources that accompany for six years, I mean, we want to do that. We don't want to short-change those classes on the, our resources that go with the text.
And then, it's interesting, when you go through and you read the findings from the pilot.
Yeah.
It's interesting that you come in tonight and say that everybody is now, because when you read that, clearly, that was not, I did not pick up on, everybody was sold. So, do you say what changed in that process, or was it discussions or the new?
Yeah. There was no arm-twisting, I can guarantee you that. No one had to go against the other. It was truly, again, the last almost three years of work on. Remember, we knew what the Next Generation Science standards looked like, we didn't know exactly what Massachusetts would add, maybe Massachusetts branded. But those teachers have been intimately involved in the creation of those units, so they know the standards like the back of their hand. So, when they looked at the new reprint for Massachusetts, it was crystal clear that Glenn Poe had paid significant attention. Not only that, it was as if Glenn Poe looked at our next, our science units, because they really aligned to them almost seamlessly in many cases. So, um, I'm not sure that they didn't get hold of some of our documents, but that's what they saw, that they, it truly was better aligned than the, um, Pearson.
She gives us.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, moving right along to school committee matters of interest, and we'll start with you tonight, Mrs. Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to echo Mrs. Regan's comment about what Lucy did was an amazing show. I attended, um, their first opening night, and there was a line at the door to get tickets, so, um, again, shout out to the TMHS theater company, and congratulations for the past ten years there. Um, and also, since we won't be meeting, um, since we have a graduation on June 2nd, um, I just want to congratulate all the seniors, and I'd like to wish them all a safe and fun senior year.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Mr. Cutlass? Okay, Mr. Francis?
Thank you. Um, I just want to remind the community, uh, all the plans have been finalized for the dedication ceremony of the Memorial Athletic Field in honor of Edward K. Dick. It's going to be on May 24th, with the reception in the high school at 4:00 P.M., and the ceremony will follow immediately, uh, on the field at 5:15, followed by a varsity lacrosse match between Tucksbury and Drakehead. Um, it's, it's going to be a great day, to honor a great man, and I'm open to his tremendous support from the community for that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I'd just like to announce to the, uh, community, um, Ron Tarantino, 12 days from today, a year ago, uh, Ron was taken from us. He was a police officer, uh, working out of Auburn, Massachusetts. He's a former Tucksbury High graduate, and he played basketball there, and, uh, I think we'd like to put together a subcommittee so, uh, to honor not only his sacrifice, but to celebrate his life, hopefully, uh, during the next basketball, upcoming basketball season. So, uh, if anyone's interested in doing that, please reach out to me. Uh, we'll hopefully work with the superintendent, get either the principal or assistant principals and some community leaders, uh, together and see what's the best way that we can put together to honor and celebrate Ron's life. So, uh, they're also honoring him in their sweep down in, uh, Washington, D.C., where his name will be placed on the Law Enforcement Memorial Law. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, I'm not going to, I was going to talk- Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, I'm not going to, I was going to talk with the Warren articles, but everyone did a great job again. Thank you to the community for coming out and voting. Thank you to our town manager. Thank you to the board selectmen. Again, thank you to the finance committee. We appreciate the continued support, and education is a priority here in Tucksbury. We already talked about the Parmanath, and last was just the Memorial Day Parade. We will be participating in the Memorial Day Parade, so I just want to put that out to all my colleagues, whoever will be participating in the ceremony at the cemetery, followed by the parade. Just letting them know, work something out, and we'll represent the schools and that. And that's all I have for this evening. Future school committee meetings, I just wanted, did we check on that date for, in July?
That was July 12.
Yes.
The question I answered, July 45 to July 12.
Was that this year?
This year.
Then that, that was 2018.
Eighteen. Oh, I'm sorry, you.
For this summer. That's okay. So we can, we can bring it back. We just want people to know. But we, we had moved it from the middle, because you guys are going to conference to the end of the month. I actually am away myself. So I was looking to see if this summer, 2017, our school committee meeting, if we could move it to July 12.
With the following, our business of all the weeks.
Okay, so could we move it July 12? So I want to make a note of that, Mr. Johnson, tonight, that we are finally, that we will, with everybody's schedule being in the summer, we are going to move our July meeting to July 12, and we could update on the website.
2017.
2017, which will be this summer. And then, the other one, erase that, the one that we said on the 2018, would you like it on the 12th of the middle of the month, or would you like it at the 25th?
Madam Chair, I'd like to wait until 2018, make that.
All right, so we'll leave the proposal as is for now, at the 25th. Okay, that's wonderful. That's terrific. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Okay, with that being said, are there any future adjournments? Okay, not seeing any. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to motion.
So I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. We look forward to seeing everyone at our next June 14, 2017 meeting, and we will have lots of activities in the schools as school comes to a close. And we have our seniors graduating in senior week, so we'll be around a lot, and we'll be very busy. And again, like Mrs. Bennett said, we congratulate all of our seniors that are graduating, and we encourage everyone to be safe and enjoy their celebrations as we move forward. Thank you, and we'll see everyone on June 14.